Okay, we'll call the Planning Commission May 8th or May 9th to order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertaining motion for the approval of the minutes of the April 18th meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have two public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity. Then those who wish to speak against are given an opportunity to speak against. So with that in mind, the first item on the agenda tonight is a conditional use permit to allow a daycare facility at 9521 Lakeshore Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Would you come forward and identify yourself or the clerk, please?
Good evening. My name's Anita Docalari. I'm the president of Mike's Child Care.
Okay, and give us an overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
We would like to open up a facility where we would be caring for children six weeks to age 14.
Now, is the property owner here? I see he is here. Would you, I, we have some questions for you as well, I think. So if you'd come forward. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself here, but we have some questions about the construction that's going on in that site and some of the debris that's in there. Construction company that's renting the site.
Will I may I state my name first?
Sure.
Randy Viviani, Viviani FLP, Willoughby, Ohio.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think I did. I think, I think we have a concern about the construction company that's on the site. About some of the debris and some of the landscaping that exists.
First of all, it's a roofer that was permitted by me to use the shed, to do nothing else on the site. I've spoke with him. He's removing all the debris from there and he's removing himself from the site.
Okay, how long has he been there, just out of curiosity?
Maybe a year, I don't know. He said he asked the police department if it would be okay and they didn't have an issue.
See, the police department has no votes.
I understand. He was not permitted to do that and he's going to be removing all his stuff from the site.
That includes the camper?
Correct.
Okay. Now, anyone wishing to speak in favor? I'm sorry, I had to get that out of the way. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this applicant? Anyone wishing to speak against this applicant? Would you come forward and identify yourself or the clerk, please?
My name is Bishop Mock Rogers. I'm the pastor of Christ Kingdom Ministries and director of Christ Kingdom Family Resource Center.
Okay, and you're against it for what reason?
Uh, we're presently, I, I took a look at the letter that was placed inside the application. Said it was a vacant building, eyesore, so forth and so on. We rent the building. Been there for about roughly two years. Serve the community in more ways than just a, uh, than just a worship service. We serve roughly about 200 people from Menter, Mentor on the Lake, as well as Mentor Hill and food, clothing. We have addiction workshops that go on within the building. We planned on opening a school once we can purchase the building, which we had to just secure funding and we do have a land, active land contract on the building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Would you come forward and identify yourself or the clerk, please?
My name is Charles Dome and I live 9556 Deer Ridge, behind the center. And I have no problem with zoning being changed to a daycare center, but I do have a problem with all the debris and the property's been neglected for a long time. There's overgrown trees, there's trees that are laying on the ground, there's weeds. That concerns me is, you know, like looking at my backyard, that's what I see, all that dead stuff. I think if you want to rezone it, maybe they could replace that landscaping that buffers those houses or maybe put a fence across the back to kind of mask that off for us so we don't have to look at all that. All those leaves all went along blowing our yard and trash, bags. So those are the concerns I have. I mean zoning for daycare is fine, I just think it needs to be cleaned up. The property's really neglected, it's been abused for, it's not been taken care of for a lot of years. I've been there like 13 years. So those are my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioner members, any questions for the applicant or the property owner?
I, I have a question of the property owner. It sounds like you have a tenant in that space.
Right.
With a land contract, now, and now we have a, someone else wants to, you want to lease it or rent it or whatever?
The current tenant has not paid a dime in two years. The current tenant is responsible for the landscaping on the property.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We're not, we're not in a position to deal with any of that, but I just wanted to know.
He has no contract. He is not paid. He will be evicted if I have to. I've asked him to remove himself from the premises, which he has refused to do so far.
So let me go to the city.
Mr. Rogers.
Oh, go ahead, no, no.
Any rebuttal on it?
Absolutely. First of all, we never really had full access to the whole property as, as right off the rip, the contract was breached. It was written in section two, a roofer, at other times written in section two, a rock band, and so forth and so on. We do keep up the upkeep of the property on it, like the property on the side and the front of the building is well upkept. Around the back, there were trees and all this other stuff that was down before we ever got there, which is, and, and eyesore, and we have been trying to do what we can, little by little, but, um, we get no help from the owner at all. And it, and he has been able to collect money from the other entities, you know, that do use the property.
It's, it sounds to me like you guys got a dilemma amongst yourselves.
True.
And I, I'm not sure the Planning Commission has the authority or the wherewithal to deal with that. I'm going to suggest that we table this until you clean the property up.
Yeah.
Well, and.
Yeah, Mr. Law Director, seems to be a lot of potential legal issues here.
The only issue before the commission tonight is the conditional use permit. If there's other problems, there are other forums to deal with that. I don't think that's before us tonight. I certainly respect your concern.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to table this item. Until such time as the property's cleaned up and you resolve your internal problems, which we have no control over, so.
Second.
You call the roll, please.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item number two, conditional use permit to allow recreational facility at 7471 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Mr. Andrews, if you'd identify yourself or the clerk, please.
I'm Andrews and I'm the building owner. Can I answer any questions?
And you are?
Yeah, I'm Chris Rayner, trainer, volunteer trainer, attorney fitness.
Okay. Tell us what you want to do at that location.
That location, well, we're currently, we currently have a location on Pine Cone and we're looking to relocate that location to the location on Tyler. It's a metabolic conditioning fitness center. Our goal is to have people healthy inside and out. It's a faith-based nonprofit ministry that uses fitness to reach people for Christ.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Nothing, other than what's been noted in the staff report for proposed condition.
So it's all volunteer, am I correct in that assumption?
Certainly it is. Part of the reason we want to move to this location is to grow, therefore we can employ a facility director, but currently it's all volunteer, yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
So there is no membership fee?
Currently, no. We have a financial freedom policy where you can come to the gym, try it out. If you like it, then give what you can give to help support the gym.
And all your operating expenses and your insurances, that's all from donations from philanthropic organizations?
Uh, it's, it's donated, yes. We, we, the, the, the people that come to the gym, they help offset those expenses. We also try to reach out to possible sponsors that usually are people that come to the gym that have a business or something like that, that they will help sponsor people to help offset our, our expenses.
At Pine Cone, did you have a automatic external defibrillator at your previous location?
Yes, yes, we do.
And can I recommend that, we very strongly recommend that you implemented it, this new facility?
We will, yes.
Okay, and here's a brochure here if you're interested. Gives you the number of the men or fire department, they can assist you if, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
I have a question of the city.
Go ahead.
I have a question of the city. Just parking is my only concern, the only, only thing that I'm sensitive to. There's a 147 for 18 suites that are there. If this, if this use, uses 20 spaces, if every one of the 18 spaces required 20, you know, you'd need 360 spaces. So are we, are we getting into a problem with the, with the, I realize the use of the other spaces don't require 20, but are we getting into a tight situation for parking?
I, I guess I would ask the property owner.
Well, just first, from a, from just a code point of view, I mean, I, I see it, but.
It's in compliance, so, you know, from that standpoint, but, I mean, in terms of the existing other tenants that are in there?
Okay, then let me look at it from a slightly different point of view too, and I'll address the, the owner of the property. This changes the use, which increases the use of parking and according to this, they'll probably make their parking, you'll have the parking required, but this would also limit your ability to change any of these other spaces to a use that would increase the parking because eventually you're going to run out of parking real fast.
I do want to correct one thing on the staff report, and I called in the day I received this. It is actually 3,000 square feet. So that would reduce the amount of required parking.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just, that's, my statement still stands, which is if eventually you, you take a space like this which has limited parking requirements and you start upgrading the use, you're going to quickly run out of, out of parking, so it's, it's fine now, but it might not be fine later, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Not only entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the three conditions.
Second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Under old business, conditional use permit to allow a church at 7671 Johnny Cake Ridge. Now, that was a public hearing at a previous meeting, so we're going to treat it as a public hearing at this meeting, so. Right ahead. If you'd identify yourself or the clerk, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Was that previously tabled, we have to remove from the table?
Yes, we do.
Motion to remove item number three and tonight's agenda from the table.
Second.
Good catch.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Go right ahead.
Good evening. Ken Wright, pastor of LifePoint Church.
Gentlemen.
Jason Clark, trustee at LifePoint Church.
Okay. And why don't you give us a little overview of what you'd like to do there? I, I read in the staff report what you'd like to do, but it's better to hear it from you.
Well, initially, we would like to take occupancy for our offices and classroom use.
That was pretty succinct. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Would you come forward and identify yourself or the clerk, please?
I'm Bonnie Walmershouser. I live at 8079 Brentwood, which this school is in our backyard.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, when we heard about this, we went to.
Take another mic.
We went to their website and I tried to get some answers from the city, but it was kind of inconclusive, so. First concerns, has the church purchased this property or do they plan to purchase it? Because we need to get to the problems that this is going to create based on how this wants to be used.
Well, we'll address that, but continue.
Okay. We would need to know how many members we're talking about because based on the plans that the city has, they're claiming only like 150 members. Well, based on the website, their attendance for their Easter was 927. Now, the building back there currently has like 58 parking spots. I understand the plans are to double that. Well, here's where the problem comes in. The unfortunate circumstance exists that you can't legislate good neighbors. Many people have little regard for the personal space or property of others and a much higher expectation for their own convenience, circumventing the rules they consider unnecessary. When the proper was, when the property was being used for a public school, for the most part, it was a pleasure to have the arrangement. The activity there displayed a stable, solid, small neighborhood vibe and school activity was confined for the most part during the day during the week. Now, the project in question is 25 steps from my driveway and it abuts my backyard, which is personal and private space that we pay for. This is a representation of the streets defining my property and the lot. It should be noted that Stanford is narrow. It's 21 feet wide. It's not intended for heavy public traffic or access. It literally stops at the building parking lot. I have a compact car, which is seven and a half feet wide. When people park on both sides of Stanford, which they do when there were activities at the school, there's only five feet between the cars unless people park on our lawns, which is exactly what happens. Signage there indicates that there's no entry into the property from Stanford. Those signs are totally ignored. Not only are those signs ignored, but the four-way stop that you see down there, that has become a suggestion to many drivers. They drive right through it in all directions, including right into the school parking lot. Now, as one of the only two residents even needing to use this end of Stanford to access or pull out of our driveway, I've been subjected to confrontational drivers who have entered the wrong way or exited the parking lot down the middle of the street. First of all, at this end of Stanford, it is not even a street in a conventional sense. The usual number of vehicles coming and going during typical school days created an acceptable and expected level of activity. The 58 or so designated parking spaces seem to adequate for the day-to-day activities as a small school with limited attendance. However, when special activities and school events occurred, disregard of personal property and neighborly attitudes took an ugly turn. Picture the area around my home and that of the neighbor across from us on Stanford with cars parked on both sides of the street, through the intersection, around the corners and bumper to bumper along both sides. Front and back of our home, front and side, turfing up our lawns, walking back and forth through the yards, just feet from open windows. This is the kind of regard people have. We have no curbs or sidewalks. It made it difficult and dangerous to get in and out of our own driveways during these times when the school had those kinds of activities. On several occasions, I did call the school following an event or a situation to ask that attention be given to the problem, but things never really changed or improved. Okay, without a doubt, the proposed conditional usage would certainly exacerbate the problem, impact detrimentally, cause unsafe conditions and create a burden on the neighborhood. According to the plans, we have been told they intend to double the parking spaces, creating the following scenario. Okay, let's go with a possible 120 total parking spaces. Let's say half of those choose to exit from Stanford rather than going to the main street. Let's just say only half. They're planning on two Sunday services. Okay, four times in the course of a Sunday, I'm going to have 60 cars streaming past my house, along with all the ignoring that's done to the stop signs. So furthermore, there will be those who will decide, well, I'm not going to park there, I'm going to park on the side street because I want to get out of the parking lot quickly. So what are they going to do? They're going to be taking up the parking spaces right at the end of my driveway. Our neighborhood is of sound value. It's a nice little neighborhood. We have increasing home prices and quick turnaround for sale. It currently is desirable. There is overall pride taken by the residents, as is evidenced by attention to maintenance and improvements. My neighborhood is a great example of the type of city mentor is when at its best and planning is given proper consideration. It is, however, not a location conducive to a large volume of traffic, cut-through or excess parking. It's not a main street. There is no upside to opening the area to heavy traffic and parking needs with events that spill over into the private property of nearby residents. It certainly is a safety hazard. And along with that, I heard that it was said they want to start with offices. Well, given the size of the building and the fact that this is a church, are we planning on free food distribution, addiction support groups, things like that, that are going to add further to this tight situation with its traffic? Are we going to be introducing elements into the neighborhood that we just might not want? These are all questions that I think need to be addressed.
Okay. We'll get to them.
Thank you.
My name is Lloyd Walmershouser. I'm her husband. And I just wanted to add some thoughts. We weren't notified of the first meeting, which is a little upsetting. We just found out about this because we had a letter. And we've reached out, we haven't had much time to do anything, but we reached out to a community and environmental defense service company that offers attorneys for free. And they sent me a quality of life impact review checklist. And there's a lot of things on it, but I'm just going to talk about the most applicable. What worries me is when they said our initial use will be. And when I went to the city and I said, what about soup kitchens? What about drug rehabs or reach out? And they do a lot of that, and that's good, but they need to do it someplace where it's not zone residential. Now, on this list, and it's kind of like, yes, you should have it, no, you shouldn't have it, and there's only a few here. Overall quality of life impact. Has this project, project been designed in a way that preserves existing quality of life for nearby residents? I don't think so. Does the project design include any features for enhancing the quality of life of the neighbors? I don't think so. Crime. Does the project design incorporate appropriate crime prevention? Will the project cause law enforcement to be involved and can they handle it? I stopped at the fire department. If there's a number of cars in there, they're not going to be able to get a fire truck in there. Environmental. Do project plans show preservation, including an adequate buffer? Why don't they close that road that's only supposed to be one-way and put a 10-foot fence so we can't be affected by that? They're not going to. Noise. Has a project been designed to prevent an undue amount of noise at nearby homes, schools and other sensitive sites? I don't know what they're going to do because they said initially offices, but they have motorcycle get-togethers. They're planning picnics, are they going to have carnivals there? This is going to cause problems. Property ownership. Do the plans show the project will not intrude into property owned by others? The pictures that I sent you there, that's an actual, and there's another resident that's here, that's what it looked like when the school had an after, after-school event. They parked on both sides, they parked in front of my house and they didn't walk down the street to come down the street to get into the school. They walked right across my land, my property and looked into the window five feet away from me when we were having dinner. Now picture 900 people at a church service, where are you going to put those cars? These are all problems. And traffic, for some reason, people don't stop for the stop signs and we have pets and kids in the neighborhood and it's going to be a dangerous situation. Thank you.
Just to answer your question on the, you weren't notified at the first meeting. I think it was tabled before there was any discussion on it, so you wouldn't have been notified at that point.
Okay. All right, thanks.
But that's why I allowed an opportunity to speak tonight.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. You're back in the barrel.
Well, first of all, I appreciate our neighbors' concerns and, um, you know.
You got one more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I didn't see your hand go up back there.
Good evening. My name's Pamela Watkins. I live across the street from Bonnie and Lloyd and I don't have a problem with the church going in there as long as we know what's going to take place there. As mentioned, we do not have any sidewalks, we do not have any streetlights. Are they going to have activities at night? When there is an activity going on at the school at night or even during the day with the parking, I can't pull out of my driveway because they're on their tree line and halfway out in the street and people all over the place. And I would like to know why the rest of the neighborhood was not notified also. Because if they hadn't told me, I wouldn't have known this was taking place at all. And I think that's what really upsets me.
In defense of the city, I think the only people that are notified are the adjacent property owners, am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
But everybody I've talked to is upset because it's a peaceful, quiet neighborhood. People enjoy going over there, walking their pets, walking their kids to play, play baseball. It's a fun neighborhood. I don't want to see it turned into some circus.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, I appreciate the concerns. I think there are a lot of assumptions that have been presented here without really knowing the facts of LifePoint Church, which we'd be more than willing to address any of those questions. As far as the Easter attendance, that was over three services, three days, excuse me, two days, Friday and then two particular services on Sunday. So, you know, that's basically the exception and not the rule. Our average attendance on Sunday is between 250 and 300 people, divided into two services, one at 9:30 and one at 11:15. So that kind of traffic flow or people, again, that was a special, obviously Easter, special day, three services, so that number is somewhat, for lack of a better term, inflated. I can't address the issues of parking previously for school events. But I do know that there are certain requirements that if we're going to occupy the property, that we have to have a certain amount of parking places to accommodate that as well. So I think that issue could be addressed, obviously. As far as people not obeying the, the signs, I don't know how we could police that ourselves.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you. Can the police department pay special attention to that, um, street and ticket, and ticket when it's necessary? I, I'm just asking the city that question.
It's been done in the past, but we can make, make a point that there's a certain significant number of violations, the police department will control it.
And along with Sam Muntz, can we just post the street, no parking?
We can certainly address that at a traffic working group meeting.
But make that conditional for the, for what we're, what's in front of us today?
Have to speak with the, you know, the engineering department, police and fire department first and the city administration.
I know, I know, but if we made something like that conditional to this project, it would have to wait until that would be established?
Go right ahead.
My wife mentioned you can't, you can't legislate good behavior and we don't want to have to come outside. If you put up no, no parking signs everywhere, when they have an overflow, there's no place else to park. They're going to have to park there. And I don't want to have to come out there and confront people every, nor does my wife, nor does my neighbor, or all confront people and call the police. I don't want to be calling the police on all their parishioners every Sunday because they're going to, some are going to come late. They'll have new members that won't know they shouldn't park there. It's going to be a nightmare. So, and, and when this happens, all the TV channels are going to be there taking videos of it and you guys are going to have to address that because it's going to be a nightmare. You know, he said it's only 300 people. Well, they have 120 spots. You want 120 people driving past, or 60 cars driving past your house two times every Sunday? Four times. You know, do, do what you want, but if you lived where I live and my house is the most affected, you wouldn't want it.
Do they have sufficient parking?
We do have sufficient parking for the.
If I may, sir.
Proposed, proposed parking for the use.
If I may interject, sir.
Right ahead.
The playground, existing asphalt parking lot in the rear of the, the north side of the building is currently not being used. The school did not use it for parking. Our proposed site plan, we are going to re-strike. Our proposed site plan, we are going to re-stripe that and designate that for parking. So that's going to be an additional 50-ish parking spots, which gets us to about 101 parking spots in excess of what's required.
Your report says 33. Now you're saying 50.
I'm sorry, 33. I'm sorry, I misspoke. But it gets our total to 101 parking spots, which is more than sufficient for the required use. And to address the issue on Stanford, obviously, I have young children. I've been involved in school functions and pick-up and drop-off in the zoo that entails. That certainly is not a representation of our proposed use. So I'm certainly sensitive to what they've experienced in the past, but that is not necessarily a reflection of our use. And our main access to and from the property is the state route, Ridge Road, south of the property. There are two aprons. That is where our parishioners are going to be directed to enter and exit. And additionally, there is overflow parking in the adjacent strip mall, next to, adjacent to Petites. So we are pursuing permission to use that in the event someday that we would need to have that as designated excess overflow parking spots.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Is this the first time that you're addressing some of these concerns with the residents tonight?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be possible in order to squelch some of the fears and rumors is that your group hosts a meeting at the school or at some location where you can hold a meeting and talk it through and address these issues amongst yourselves and then come back with some general consensus?
I mean, we would be...
Because they got a good point.
Well, they would be, I mean, we would be more than willing to sit down and talk with whoever about the concerns that they might have. You know, again, our goal is not to be a burden to our community. Our goal is to be a blessing to our community. And, you know, they mentioned certain, you know, groups. We have what's called life groups. These are small groups that meet the majority off-site. So I know the bike group was mentioned. These are people who ride motorcycles, and they meet and do motorcycle rides, not necessarily meeting at our location. They just meet at certain locations and go. Addressing the homeless and the drug situation that we have in our community, I think those needs need to be addressed, and I think the church plays a role in that. We partner with people who are already hosting and providing care. So for instance, when you talk about feeding the homeless, there's a church that we partner with in Painesville that hosts the homeless community. And we provide volunteers. We provide finances. We provide food as a partnership for them. We have not hosted any of those things at our current facility, nor is that our plan. Again, our plan is to partner with our community, not to reinvent the will, but to be able to help assist other people.
Mr. Varga.
I have a question of the city. And, you know, I'm always looking for solutions. So could we, there is a proposal for a six-foot solid fence, and then it steps down. Could we just eliminate the access to the side street? I mean, there's any reason for that to be maintained?
That's not a decision that we...
Well, we can make it. We can say that this project gets approved on the basis of that access to the side street being abandoned.
Public right-of-way.
Not into their property. As soon as it hits the property line, it stops.
I'd want to run that by the fire department before we did anything.
Well, I know. I understand that.
That's true.
But I mean, what I'm thinking about is if there was a continuous fence at the property line, no man, no gate, no vehicular access. They've got two spots where the fire trucks can come in. I have a feeling that was used, maybe the residents can verify this, when they brought buses in, that they might have circulated buses through there. I don't know for sure.
It was exit for buses.
Exits for buses. So I have a feeling that the reason that was maintained when the school was there was for bus traffic. So the buses didn't have to turn around. But a fire truck could come down. If they can turn around and allot it in and go back out, I mean, we have to verify that. But I'm just saying, if that, if we just abandon that access, no man door, no gate, no vehicle access, six-foot fence, eight-foot fence, whatever we need to do, and then I think we address all the functional requirements, and no, you know, no one could park, why would anyone park there? They can't get to the facility. So...
In line with what you said in that attorney website that I went to, this came up, and the fire department wanted access. And the way they solved it was they put a gate that was held the key by the police and the fire department so they could open it for emergency access. I just want to make a comment about what they said about parking in the mall. No one from the church ever parked in the mall. The problem is, my house is 25 feet from the school. My house is 25 feet from the school. So no one's going to park hundreds of feet around the corner. I mean, they have to if you close off the street. And everything they're trying to do with the feeding the homeless or the hungry and drug addiction, my 24-year-old grandson died of a heroin overdose three months ago. So I'm not against that. They just need to do it someplace where it's zoned so it's not going to affect the residential neighborhood, and that's it.
Well, getting back to what I was suggesting as a possible solution is if we just eliminated all access to that neighborhood from this property. I mean, we're addressing the parking. We're addressing pedestrians. I don't see why that's, I mean, I understand, we can't dictate that, but we could make it conditional to this action.
If I may address his concerns, sir. The gentleman just suggested that the church belong in somewhere other than a residential zoned area. But in fact, the requirement of a church zoning is a residential zoned area. So the church is supposed to be in a residentially zoned area.
Then why do you need a conditional use?
Stop it.
Yeah, this is not a debate.
We're not going to get into a debate here.
We're not going to get into a debate.
No, I've closed the, I've closed the public hearing. We're done.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Larry, you know, they're talking about improving the rear behind the building, coming up with 33 parking spaces. Can they expand more back there and create 50 or 100 back there? Or would the zoning prohibit that?
They could always expand the parking lot there. You have plenty of room back there.
Right.
As we've done with churches in the past, when we've had them in the residential district, we usually require at a minimum a solid fence along the property line. That's where that staff exhibit came from, to provide that screening. In some cases, some of the churches, when they've had the room, we've also required some landscaping to soften the headlight, basically headlight mitigation. Fencing works probably the best. But yeah, they could potentially expand that parking lot as the aerial shows at a good distance.
Right. Well, maybe that's something you need to consider, take into consideration, some additional spaces at the rear, not the 33. I'm talking 50 or 75 or back there.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Doesn't that, isn't there requirements that we have to meet as far as parking goes? In other words, we have to have so many spaces dependent upon or based upon the number of people, occupancy, or am I, I'm trying to get clarification on that. So wouldn't that come from you anyway?
The zoning dictates the number of parking spaces. I'm talking about in order to alleviate these unforeseen problems with special events, special masses, special this, where it's going to bring in volumes of cars. I can understand your concerns. You start parking on the grass.
Well, we definitely wouldn't, I'm sorry. We definitely would not, again, I can't police everyone, but we would very highly encourage our parishioners to park in the parking lot. Again, I can't address what happened for the school. I just think we'll have our number of parking spots that we're supposed to have. I would hate to see a barrier go up there because I've been over there several times recently, and there are kids that go. They play. They use the park. They use the ball fields. And that's something we would love to continue to have take place. And I think putting a wall or a fence in that area would send the wrong message to our community.
If I can address a couple of things from a regulatory standpoint. They did provide two different site plans. One site plan did include some land bank parking space. So there is an area that's been designated in the back of the property, I'm sorry, well, extending the other proposed parking behind the existing building, which would provide for some additional spaces. The current parking restriction is based on the number of seating. So we would have to make sure, because the number continues to be adjusted here as we talk. So I think we would have to be certain as to the number of seating that is being provided in the gathering area and the worship area so that we can determine actually the number of required spaces. Because it's 0.25 spaces per seat. So we've received 150 to 250. We base our calculations on 250. Based on that number, the maximum number of seating is 88 spaces. So if that number is changing to 300 or 350, we need to know that so that we can accommodate the required number of spaces. With regard to the uses, I think it needs to be made clear. This application is a conditional use permit application for a church. If there are going to be any other uses that are part of this proposed building, they have to be approved. They can't just bring in a soup kitchen. They can't just bring in a homeless shelter. They have to be approved by the city. Having a classroom or a group that has meetings is not the same thing as bringing in and opening it up for a different use. So with any church, they have support services that they provide to the community. That's standard with any church. Churches are conditionally permitted in the residential district. They have to meet certain conditions. If there are any other uses that are going to be in there, we need to know about it, and it needs to be approved. So that is an accessory use that is permitted with a church as long as you see it permissible.
As long as you know ahead of time.
Right. So right now, the application that we have before us is for a church. It's for nothing else. If anything else is going to be proposed, the applicant is being put on notice tonight. We need to know about it. And that's the only thing that we have the ability to approve right now.
Anything else?
We understand that completely.
You don't have any proposals for anything else other than the church?
No. Right.
Can I make a suggestion that we table this, the provision that we find out what the actual parking requirements are going to be?
Based on seating.
And I'd like to add to that, and the consequences of eliminating the access to the Stanford Road. Because it's a non-standard width, doesn't meet the standard city use. You know, I mean, it's existing, but it doesn't have curbs. You can't park on it. I'd like to see that connection. And I understand your concern about kids coming into the playground and stuff, but I understand the residents' concerns too. If there was no vehicular access at that point, this whole parking issue would go away.
And, and maybe some additional discussion with the community in a less hostile environment to talk this through.
Sure.
Three things. Three things.
May I continue, or does...
Well, go ahead. Yeah, if you want to say something.
So the existing school, the way it's currently configured, there is no gathering area large enough to hold more than 150 or so seats. So I understand the concern of if we have a large event or have a large gathering or any Easter service, but in order to do that, we would need to do renovations to the building. We would need to do additional parking. So at the time when we're ascertaining doing such, we would have to come back to the planning department, get approval for whatever renovations or additions or modifications we want to do to the building and to the parking at that time. So currently, as the building is currently configured and as it exists, the 101 spaces are more than sufficient for our offices and for our meetings.
Well, I heard the number 300, both from the city and I believe from your presentation.
Sure. 300 was the...
300 is more than the number that's being accounted for here, correct?
I think it's 300 congregants, but again, we still need to be clear, which is what he's clarifying, is how many seats that they can hold in gathering for.
150 at a service.
I'll look to my commissioners, fellow commissioners, for additional input, but I think I would like to table it on the grounds of closing that road and further nailing down the parking requirements.
I can bring that to the traffic working group. That's the, I mean, that's the best opportunity for us.
When do they meet?
I don't have it offhand. I know, I mean, they meet every month, so I know, I don't have the May date in front of me.
Beginning of a month or the end of a month?
We're in the middle.
Of course. Why would we be...
I'll find out. It's definitely before the next meeting.
Well, okay. That was what I was going to ask.
If I may, that road has no bearing on what we're trying to accomplish today.
Yeah, but it has a bearing on those individuals.
To the community, yeah. I understand. If it has no bearing to this, then we can close it off. I mean, completely. And then the neighborhood is, their concerns about parking, access, people walking through their backyards, everything we just heard would be eliminated because there's no access then from that neighborhood. And though you might have appreciated a connection with the kids going to the park, they can walk, if they really want to go there, they can walk around and get to the parking and get to the playground.
So...
And a verification that the fire department would agree. But I think with this configuration and with the parking in the back where the fire trucks could turn around and go back out, I think they could. But I'd like the fire department to verify that.
Kathy, the traffic working group is made up of whom?
The engineering department, the police department, the fire department, public works, and the city management office.
So that's everybody.
Now, is that a public right-of-way right up to the property line?
Yes.
No further.
Is it considered a substandard street, though?
It's 50 feet wide as a public right-of-way. The pavement reference, the reference to the number of feet was only in reference to the pavement, but it's, so it's substandard in the stands. It's not a 60-foot right-of-way.
Exactly. And it's only 21 feet wide, which is also substandard to the neighboring street. So I'm still going back to my proposal, my suggestion, that we table this until we get the feedback on parking, on the ability to shut off that access to the side road.
Further discussion.
And further, and, you know, whatever other discussions they have is their business. I don't want to get involved with...
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my colleague.
Let me ask you this. What does that do to your purchase of the building?
We are currently under contract to purchase the building with the city, from the school board, I'm sorry. Delaying approval tonight would potentially put that in jeopardy.
Okay. But not necessarily.
I can't necessarily speak to that.
In your contract with the school district, is there any conditions that you must have obtained your approvals first in order to go forward to protect you?
Yes, sir. But there is a timeframe within which that must occur.
Right.
Mr. Wilson of the school district contacted me before the meeting, and he asked me for an update after the meeting, which I will call him and let him know status.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm still making a motion to table this for the concerns of resolving the traffic group, the ability to shut the street off, to fence it off completely, and to, well, the fire department will address that then, too.
If I may add, again, we hired an architect to draw the additional parking spots there that are seen on the drawing, that give us more than adequate...
I understand. I'm just talking about access to, vehicular access to the neighborhood, to eliminate that. And everything else you're doing is fine. I mean, you know, you can have all the parking spaces you need, assuming the fire department goes along, to just eliminate the access, which is the bone of contention with the neighborhood. Just eliminate. It's not necessary.
Hypothetically, though, if we come back here and the fire department says, we can't block that road off, where does that leave us?
I can't speak to it because I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I'll leave it to the fire department to respond. I can't predict what they're going to say.
Regardless of what happens with the fire department, you would still come back here, and we would vote on it. So it's almost like additional information for this commission before we vote.
Correct.
Okay.
To act on it without that information, I think would be, we shouldn't do it.
And again, I would be more than glad to sit down with any of the residents and...
I think you should.
Share their concerns or...
That's not conditional.
Share our vision.
That's not conditional to our activity, but...
No, but I think you should.
So I have a motion to table.
There was a second, so...
Second motion.
Jess?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Miscellaneous review of an outdoor display and the staging of merchandise at 9615 Diamond Center. That applicant here. Entertained a motion to remove it from the table, Mr. Sedoti.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook, or Mr. Snow, sorry.
It's okay. Two votes.
Two votes.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, my name is Dave Furlich. I'm the store manager at the Home Depot that is in question. I guess at this point, there's a staff report for the enclosures of the four different areas that was in question, and we are good with it, so.
So I think one of the questions was the fence height or the wall height?
Yeah, we added, hopefully you flipped the page, but we added conditions on the back, increasing the fence height to eight feet at the north end, and then also adding a screen wall in front of the existing tool rental area on the south end.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great with us.
Okay.
Great.
And then the additional screen wall outside of the garden center across from what would be-
Yes. Now, the one question I had about that one was, that's the exit through the garden center there? That wouldn't have to go all the way to that wall. The customers would still be able to head out through that gate, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The fire department did comment that they have been back there a couple of times, and I know you have a lot of merchandise, it can get a little bit tough to get around. So they want to make sure that that's maintained, free and clear.
That's fine. We'll comply with that.
Is it stated as a fire lane? Is it posted as a fire lane?
Is it posted as a fire lane?
Not sure. It does say that in the condition, though, that the fire lane would be maintained. There has to be a 15-foot wide fire lane.
Well, let's add to that condition, that it be posted as a fire lane.
Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, a question for the applicant. The proposed hardscape area and the fencing, while it seems like you're okay with that, is that going to create any hardship for you on the back end where the semis turn and so forth?
No, because they don't turn there. Look, the proposal is to go to the end of where that is up against, like, the Sam's Club, and they actually turn around in that back spot.
Oh, okay.
Which is opposite of our loading dock, so that won't have an issue at all. Actually, it'll help out.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks for working with the city on this.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion with the five conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Under new business, miscellaneous review of an amendment to the development plan to amend the location of sidewalks at Lake Shore Highlands.
I understand. What's the next one?
Richard Summers with Summers Real Estate Group. This subdivision was approved. If you may remember, there's a lot of curved streets, and we were doing some things that hadn't been done before with sidewalks outside of the right-of-way. This has become an issue. We're originally anywhere, we were from four feet behind the curb into the axle out of the right-of-way. This has presented some problems with logistics, sidewalks being too far up into people's front yards, and also issues with CEI. We were getting into the utility easement area. So basically what's happened, it was an experiment that didn't work. We've worked with the administration, we've had meetings on site, we've provided a new map, we are making, proposing to bring the sidewalk totally into the right-of-way now. There will be some areas where it's varied in distance from the curb, but basically asking any modification to the original plan requires your approval.
Kathy, any comments from the administration?
Just to indicate that the administration is actually pleased with the changes and are in full support of it. We made the note of the condition that the existing sidewalk easements that don't comply with the new changes would have to be extinguished, and the affected property owners would need to be on board with that.
We've worked with everybody. It shouldn't be an issue. So I think what we'll have to do is file a new plat.
Okay.
But extinguishers, they have to work with the law department on exactly how to do that.
Okay. Questions, commissioners? None, entertained a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Thank you. Director's report, Kathy?
I have nothing tonight. I think I've said enough.
Larry, anything for the good of the party?
Nothing for the good of the party.
Okay. Anything for the bad of the party?
Tabled, and then it comes up to be revoked. Will we be notified? How will we know?
Three weeks.
Three weeks? So every three weeks there's a meeting?
Yes.
And then we just come to meetings and, okay.
You can check in and-
Check the website. And our agenda's on the website, too.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know. Sorry.
Not a problem. Where are you calling, Jess? Is it where you call you?
Yeah, just call me.
Yeah. You're good at works.
Motion to adjourn. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Are we off the air?
Yeah. You hated it.
Because we didn't-